Hafedé everyone, welcome to the Guam Congress Building. The Committee on Health, Land Justice and Culture is now called to order. Today's Tuesday, January 16th and the time is 9:20 a.m. In compliance with the open government law, notice for this public hearing was published in the Guam Daily Post and posted to the government of Guam Public Notice Portal on January 8th and the January 12th, 2024. Notices were also sent by email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets and the hearings being live streamed on the Guam Legislature's YouTube channel. For those testifying, please state your name for the record before you testify so that we can accurately keep a transcription of the proceedings. Please respond only to the questions asked and senators, please allow them to answer if you ask a question. We have two agenda items. Bill's number 223-37COR, introduced by Senator Telo Tai Te Gui, Sabina Flores Perez and Jesse Lohan. It's an act to amend section 5127 of subarticle C, Article 2, Chapter 5, Division 1, Title 5 Guam Code Annotated Relative to Commercial Leasing of Public Real Property and Related Facilities. And bill number 103-37LS, introduced by Senator Roy Canata. It's an act to amend section 5127 of subarticle C, Article 2, Chapter 5, Division 1, Title 5 Guam Code Annotated Relative to Commercial Leasing of Public Real Property and Related Facilities. So for those who are watching, yes, the bill titles are almost identical. We're amending both bills proposed to amend the same section of the law relative to commercial leasing. The current law allows commercial leasing by agencies for five years and one of these bills will amend that to 10 years and one of these bills will amend that to 30 years. So we'll hear from the different sponsors on each bill. I'd like to acknowledge the presence of my colleagues this morning, beginning with Senator Telo Tai Te Gui, Senator Chris Barnett, Senator Jesse Lohan and Senator Roy Canata. Sidos Massey Senators for being here today and thank you for being patient with us while our aircon is down and I will try to do this as efficiently as possible. All right, so we'll begin with the first agenda item, bill number 223-37. Senator Tai Te Gui is the main sponsor, you may introduce the bill.
Sidos Massey, Madam Speaker, Madam Chair, and thank you and good morning to my colleagues as well as those who are testifying and those who are listening in today. As you know, I've introduced this legislation, this will be my third time, you know, as a senator in the 35th Guam Legislature, I introduced it, was the first bill I introduced and then in the 36th and now the 37th Guam Legislature. I know the importance of commerce, I know the importance of transparency and I definitely understand the hardships that many of our agencies are facing this time. So I want to thank you for joining us today to discuss bill 223-37 and act to amend 5127 of subarticle, Article 2, Chapter 5, Division 1, Title 5 Guam Code Annotated Relative Commercial Leasing of Public Real Property and Related Facilities. More simply put, a measure that I hope I will, hope will increase investor interest and confidence in Guam and the potential for revenue generating government of Guam properties. I'd like to thank my co-sponsors of this legislation as well, Senator Harris and Senator Lohan, who's also been an advocate for, for investors, you know, done correctly with transparency in mind and moving forward. We have all had a recent, well, I wasn't able to make it, but I've done it many times to do a, go to the airport and, and review what's going on there and the concerns that they're having, not just our Guam airport, but people need to realize that this is an issue happening in other jurisdictions, not just Guam. So here's an opportunity that we can be ahead and, and correct that problem. So Senator Lohan has been an advocate for that and I commend him for that and appreciate his, his sponsorship on, on this legislation. Currently Guam allows, law only allows business investors and entrepreneurs to negotiate lease terms up to five years only. For the business minded, it is easy to see that five-year lease is a rather risky, risky investment and simply not enough time to generate significant investment returns. Now, this is not the first time, again, I bring this lease extension before my colleagues and I'm hoping that this time around get vocal support and enough traction to move it forward. I look forward to our discussion and your input today, any ideas and solutions to issues that you see are, are greatly, greatly appreciated. We're here to work with you and to make this measure stronger. You will also notice that in addition to my measure, bill 103-37 introduced by my colleague, Senator Roy Canata, is on today's hearing agenda as well. He proposes to extend the term to three decades. I hope to hear opponents and proponents for both bills and hope that with everyone's idea here at the table, we can find common ground and the best way to move forward. Thank you for taking the time to come and testify and I would like to also ask Madam Chair that, you know, the other agencies that are not here today, that they'd be allowed to provide their testimony, which I hear that they will be doing, I was hoping they would be here, especially with Chmore Land Trust continuing to exempt them from this process of 10 years because they did pass their rules and regulations allowing them 21 years for, I believe, licensures and also 25 years for land leases for Chmore Land Trust. So in no way I would like to impede on the ability for them that they, on their rules and regulations that were passed prior to impede on that as well as the ancestral lands. Unfortunately, ancestral lands has yet to provide their rules and regulations to incorporate that measure of 21 to 25 like Chmore Land Trust. However, however soon they put their rules and regulations together, I don't want to impede on that, but in the meantime, they would have to still follow the, the current law. That being said, thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to provide brief remarks on this legislation.
Thank you very much, Senator Tai Te Gui, and I just want to correct something that I said earlier when I said that the law currently allows for five-year leases and that's all I said. Actually, the law allows for short-term five-year leases and it also allows for long-term leases. And there's a very specific process that was put into place several years ago. It's called exceptional term contracts, which allows agencies to declare a need for a longer-term contract, publish that need, solicit and negotiate contracts and submit those to the legislature for approval. So there is a process in our law for longer-term contracts, longer than five years. All right, and so, thank you Senator, and I'll now allow testimony on the first bill, 223 Guam Airport Authority. The Guam Pat International Airport Authority.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Hafedé and good morning Senators, I'm John Canata. I'm the Executive Manager for the Guam International Airport Authority. Hafedé Speaker Talai and members of the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture. Thank you for the opportunity to submit this testimony on bill 223-37, an act to amend section 5127 of, of subarticle C, Article 2, Chapter 5, Division 1, Title 5 of the Guam Code Annotated Relative to Commercial Leasing of Public Real Property and Related Facilities. The AB Guam Pat International Airport Authority Guam supports the intent of bill 223-37 where an increase in the authorized term for the contract, lease, permit or license for use of real, uh, public real property and related facilities by a non-governmental person or entity from five years to 10 years moves us in the right direction. This adjustment also includes the caveat that the terms and conditions of the contract, lease, permit or license have been satisfied during the initial five years as evidenced by written, uh, written approval by the Board of Directors of the relevant agency. The GIA believes that adjusting the five-year limit upwards is a move in the right direction, but that up to 30 years would be best for our tenants, developers or investors to recoup their investment into a property. Additionally, we believe that it is reasonable to require that within the five years of any contract for the use of public real property or related facilities, that the terms and conditions are met by these, by the lesses to continue the remainder of such contract. The Guam Legislature had previously authorized longer lengths of property leases in public law 35-114, which authorized the University of Guam to contract and lease property for up to 30 years. Authority for similar term for up to 30 years will provide potential tenants, investors or developers the ability to obtain the necessary commercial financing and a term to fully authorize their initial investments and achieve return of investment on their planned capital improvements. As another comparison, CNMI Public Law 20-84 increased the terms of public land leases for up to 40 years plus an extension of 15 years for a total of 55 years. Madam Chair and Honorable Senators, now is a critical time in the history of Guam's only commercial airport to begin the process of improving our ability to diversify revenue streams that will provide us the ability to continue to improve passenger experience and to open the doors to investment in facilities on our airport that have the potential to create new industries and generate additional economic activity on Guam. Bill 223-37 also meant certain portions of the exceptional term contract process by requiring the Guam Legislature to take action within 180 days instead of 60 days upon transmittal of an exceptional term contract to the Speaker of the Guam Legislature, during which time a public hearing is required to be conducted and approval, disapproval should be taking place. The GIA believes a shorter timeframe is warranted such as 90 days, but also recommends that the tolling time be amended to start when such transmittal of an exceptional term contract is made to the Speaker of the Guam Legislature with a default approval such as a period has lapsed. This may provide more assurances for those interested tenants, developers and/or investors that there is a finite timeframe for the exceptional term contract process, especially if having gone through the arduous process of negotiating lease term contracts, terms with the relevant agency and getting Board of Directors' approval. Once again, on behalf of GIA, we thank you for this opportunity to testify in bill 223-37. We look forward to the, working with this committee to advance policies in support of continued economic and airport development. Thank you, Madam Chair, for your time this morning.
Sidos Massey, Director. Mr. Hernandez.
Yeah, thank you Speaker and members of the committee. My name is Ricky Hernandez, I'm the Deputy Executive Manager for the Guam International Airport Authority. I'm also just here to express support for the bill and to be prepared for any questions that you might have. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much for being here today. We also have signed up to testify. Well, not signed up, but with the Port Authority of Guam, like to testify on this bill as well, on bill 223? Pardon? No?
Mr. Havelana is with us from the airport.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Ayayay, sorry about that.
His brother works at the port.
All right then, my, please forgive me. We did receive written testimony from the Port Authority of Guam on bill 223 and on bill 103. Okay, so we'll now allow questions from the panel. Senator Tai Te Gui.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for your testimony and always being here for, every time I've introduced this legislation. But, you know, you know, I too understand, as a business owner myself, you know, I understand the importance of return in investment and many of the companies that have come before you, I've actually provided a list of those opportunities that were lost because of the five-year timeframe. And the Speaker is right, there is an opportunity for people to lease land longer than five years. But if you have all your money riding on your business and you, well, it's, it's hard to have confidence in the government because much of it is politically driven, you know, depending on who's the governor at the time or who's sitting on the board of that particular agency, you know, that's, that's not how you do business. Business is done by numbers and add and subtraction and incentives. So it makes it very difficult when somebody has their life savings pushed in their business and then to have a confidence of the government. I understand that, but I also realize that by allowing at least 10 years in baby steps, we're making some kind of progress and I believe 10 years is, is sufficient. You know, five years, the first five years, you, you build your business and the next five years, you, you bring back your investment and if you want to extend, the opportunity is there to renew. But what we want, don't want to do is have the government of Guam lose out. A lot of times when you have a 30-year lease, there's no opportunity for appraisal of that property. It goes up in value, that amount stays stagnant through the whole 30-year lease unless you have a contract that allows, you know, every 10 years, an appraisal is done to the property for the true value of the property on leasing it, for its true value. I think, you know, one of the things that we're finding that we don't want to do is repeat history. We know about what happened at YTK, we understand what happened at the ITC. I believe now that we've learned our lesson from that, but I don't think we should just jump in, you know, without a life vest into something that will provide something like 30 years. CNMI is a different cookie altogether. You cannot own land unless you're from the CNMI, if you're at Chmore from there. That's, that's a little bit different to use that analogy because of that protection for the lands in, in CNMI. Guam is different. I'm an advocate for a good business that's environmentally friendly and sustainable with the environment, but I also believe in baby steps. So I asked that the Chairman of, of the committee, as this bill goes into her committee, that it stays at 10 years. I think we need that assessment. I do believe in changing the, the one part that you agreed to from 60 days to 180 days. I don't see any issues with that one. But other than that, I think we need to really have a balance here and that means, you know, unless there's an appraisal done every 10 years to a 30-year contract, Guam is losing out on opportunities. So that being said, I again appreciate your testimony and for being here. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Sidos Massey, Senator Tai Te Gui. Senator Barnett.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Good morning, thank, thank you for coming out. So I know that one of the arguments in support of this type of legislation, this type of policy is that when we have these businesses come to the island, I mean, I've heard a million people come here and say it, that we lose these opportunities because we're not able to offer them a, a 10-year lease or a 30-year lease or a, or 50-year lease. So give me an idea of what companies we're talking about where we've missed these opportunities.
So as far as the companies that we're looking at, Senator, we're looking at big airlines that want to come here and build a MRO, which is a maintenance, repair and overhaul facility, MRO. And you're talking about hangar, hangar and maintenance facility that's over $200 million. So what these companies want to do is they want to set up shop on island, especially if they're from a foreign country, like for example Vietnam, they want to set up on Guam and build a MR facility, have a, have a partnership with GCC to, to do a, a war or a trades academy so that they can, they can get maintenance, aircraft maintenance mechanics certified here in Guam, they can do everything to do with, to do with maintaining an aircraft and repairing and, and restructuring the aircraft. Also to, to make sure that, that when they come here to Guam on a US soil, that they're able to get their certification for their aircraft to be, to be, to be refurbished here. And once you get that, then the short timeframe for these aircrafts to be coming in and out of Guam will be there. So those are, that's a, a good example of, you know, the, the aeronautical side of the house. You have folks that want to build, let's say, our, our rental car facility. If you go to certain places now in the States, you get shuttled to a rental car facility and that's where you go and get your rental car and all the, all the parking spaces are there or all the rental cars are all in one place. So you got folks that are interested in doing that here at our facility and, and those are good examples of, of why the 30 years is more acceptable than a 10-year. We do, we do, the 10 years is a good step in the right direction, especially for like our food court, our food court, like our restaurants and stuff, they're able to invest a little and in 10 years able to recoup the, the investments that they have. So that, that amount of investment they're able to get back in as far as the monies that they've put in to, to set up shop.
So when you're, when you're, thank you, thank you, Mr. Canata for that. Ricky?
Yeah, thanks for the question, Senator, if I may add, Madam Chair. I think in terms of the length of term, we do agree that 10 years and Executive Manager had mentioned is very helpful for concessions such as food and beverage because we wouldn't, at least the market doesn't dictate that a longer than a tenure for concessions is feasible, especially if we want to continue to improve upon that. But in terms of non-concessions, it was mentioned Conrak's consolidated rental car facilities is a, something that may require a longer term, sorry, may, may require a longer term for a developer to invest, to recoup their investment. I think it's important to note also too that typically these long-term leases, at least the ones prior to the law change in 2014, those require every five years that there's a 10% escalation. And then if the base rate, if the base term is, let's say, for example, 15 years with three five-year renewal periods or 20 years with two five-year renewal periods, during, after the base term, we would do a reappraisal of that to fair market value. So speaking just specifically about the airport, and we'll talk about it a little bit more in the next bill's testimony because that one speaks specifically to 30 years, but what's important to note specific to the airport is that the FAA already has regulations set up specifically for aeronautical activities, things that are related to the airfield, passenger movement, cargo movement, and then the non-aeronautical. Those are like your rental car facilities, your in-flight catering kitchens. We, we had interest from a, a veterinary clinic to be on, you know, to be able to ship pets and be able to house them if people are leaving. But they, obviously those were some opportunities that kind of went on the wayside and they found other places that were a little bit easier to contract with private company, private entities that were able to lease their lands out for better and quicker terms, quicker timeframe to, to get that negotiated. So we have, you know, obviously had some discussions with a lot of private companies just for things as small as a veterinary clinic or as big as a Conrak or as big as a hangar or a MRO facility. But for airport properties, it's very important to know that all airport properties are priority for aeronautical use because they won't go anywhere else for that and there are FAA requirements, regulations and assurances that require us to prioritize aeronautical activities first. And so when we delve into non-aeronautical activities such as a restaurant on the hill on our industrial park, right, which was Papa's and now is Capital Kitchen, those are considered non-aeronautical. But what we had done at the time was ensure that the aeronautical stakeholders of the airport were not interested in the property at the time. And so the FAA also requires for non-aeronautical activities that we have to rent to them at fair market value. We have to do it, that's the FAA requirements. And so FAA doesn't review all of our leases, but they have the power to look back at leases and if there's a complaint or if they are able to look back at a lease and it wasn't done according to assurances and, and regulations, then we would obviously have compliance issues. And so just I wanted to note that, that non-aeronautical activities such as a restaurant, for example, requires it to be fair market value. And so that's, that's kind of a, we, we feel is kind of a check to make sure that there are no, you know, risks of there being a, a deal that is not fair market value. It's required for non-aeronautical activities. So I wanted to make that point. There are all, there are several other FAA assurances and regulations. We can speak to aeronautical activities specifically. Airlines that want to set up shop at the airport, we have an assurance called economic nondiscrimination. We have to provide them space if it's available with some obviously caveats, but like if there's an airline that wants to build a hangar, we cannot deny them building a hangar. It's an FAA requirement to allow for aeronautical activities to occur at the airport because we're a public use airport and we follow FAA requirements and so those are for aeronautical activities. So, you know, there's a bit of a nuance to the airport as it relates to long-term leases. You're not going to have a hangar, a developer that wants to build a hangar anywhere else. They're only going to come to the airport, they're not going to go anywhere else and so placing a process that requires, you know, a few more steps, you know, hangar developments, they'll only come to the airport on Guam, but some airlines might say, well, it's too difficult on Guam, I can go to another place and do that, maybe CNMI, maybe another jurisdiction that might have more favorable processes for them to negotiate terms of a 30-year lease, for example. So I just wanted to add that point and I know that in bill, the next bill on the agenda, the testimony will speak a little bit more to some of those requirements that the FAA have, but I just wanted to add that to the conversation as well. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Hernandez. So on the concessions, just forgive my ignorance, but are all of those, the Burger Kings, the Best Cellar, the other like food court, court, people that you have in there, those are all like five-year terms? Can you just describe the turnaround, like so five-year lease and it's time to renew? What's the timeframe like?
Okay, so our concessions and we thank the legislature for your, your approval for the, the prior law that allowed us to do extensions. So we do have our concessions that were on up to a three-year concession extension and we were able to successfully get those negotiated, some committed to putting in Some committed to putting in a pretty substantial investment for a full three-year term, but obviously, being a little bit more judicious with our time, we didn't extend all of our concessions up to three years. So just to give you a background of what our concessions are, we have different types. Food and beverage was mentioned. We have rent-a-car companies that are concessions. We have parking facilities that are concessions, and then we have retail, specialty retail. So those are kind of some of the general concessions. And concessions just are revenue-generating contracts, right? And so we were successful in getting those extended. So for rent-a-car facilities, or rent-a-car companies, we were able to get those extended for one year, with some commitment to refresh their kiosks and areas. And we were able to do a one-year extension for food and beverage, because they were previously on month-to-month. And they also agreed to refresh their areas, as well as provide new food offerings for our passengers. And, you know, one year is not a lot to be able to put in an investment, so we were able to talk with them to ensure that, you know, the length of time of one-year extension matched the type of investment that they were willing to put in. Parking facilities, because they were willing to put in additional investment for the parking equipment in there, we allowed them to do a two-year extension. And then lastly, our specialty retail, we authorized a three-year extension with a caveat that there be substantial investment in the facility for specialty retail, such as, for example, we asked them to put a $2 million, they agreed to put in a $2 million investment into the facility to refresh some of, at least one of the revenue-generating retail outlets there. So, you know, you gave us three years. We didn't go straight to the concessions and say, here's three years. We took steps to make sure that the length of term matched with some of the future plans that we have. But speaking to your point, Senator Barnett, and your question about the length of concessions, typically, the market dictates that 10-year term for concessions is reasonable, and that's what our prior ones had. And they're not just full 10 years, they're typically sometimes a five-year with a five-year extension, a seven-year with three options for one year. It just depends on, you know, the market and what we believe that's dictating our ability to negotiate. And so, but yeah, concessions are typically up to 10 years with some options in between.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Yeah, we've got two measures here, you know, one 5 to 10, and then 5 to 30. And I think why these policies are in place is because we all know land is a very finite resource on Guam. And so I view the legislature as kind of being that backstop, that the guardians of these deals that we're proffering to these businesses, or whatever. So, yeah, there's a lot of work cut out for us. I mean, we want to be able to give you the flexibility, but we also don't want to, what's that saying, sell off the cow in the barn and everything. So, yeah, thank you for your testimony, Mr. Hernandez and Mr. Hernandez. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Lujan.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Thank you very much for being here this morning, Executive Manager, as well as the deputy and the staff, the airport. I want to commend you again. The airport management and board have been very responsive to questions and inquiries. I want to thank you also, I digress a little bit, but thank you very much again for arranging for the Customs and Border Protection folks to be here a month ago today, as a matter of fact, from Washington, D.C., from San Francisco, and Honolulu, to be here to discuss, of course, the situation at the Honolulu International Airport. We were able to get clarity on that. You guys were there, the governor was there, and also the acting Lieutenant Governor, the Speaker, was there as well, along with your management team, to get clarity on the situation at the Honolulu International Airport. And my letter went out yesterday, of course, to unite it, to, you know, hopefully rectify that. There may be some complexities that are in place, but again, knowing that the situation is not really a CBP situation, but it's a company situation in regards to the compromise of leaving the sterile area. So with that, again, the letter had gone out, hopefully that'll be rectified. So thank you very much for arranging that. Fingers are crossed that, again, our traveling public from Guam won't be burdened with the burdensome situation that happens in Honolulu. Of course, the long-term fix to that will be a preclearance here on Guam, and thank you again. And that's one of the reasons why they, actually, the main reason to come out here is the bigger picture, to get a preclearance here from CBP. And it's going to require a lot of our lobbying and working closely together to be able to do that. A lot of the equipment that needs to be purchased, and things of that nature. But thank you very much for that. And thank you also for arranging, helped us arrange to have a tour of the airport from the legislative body. I think we may have a couple more, as we help accommodate the schedules for the senators. And as a matter of fact, Bill 223 was introduced, I think, last session, but was moved forward as a result. Thank you very much again for the tour that happened last month, as a matter of fact. So this bill, you helped to be able to push this bill forward in the understanding of the operations of the airport authority, and how it works over there. You know, Madam Chair, over the years, the airport has made great strides. Now, the runway has been extended. Now we can fly a plane, a big bird, full of gas, full of cargo, and full of passengers, nonstop to the West Coast. Unfortunately, it hasn't happened yet, but it can be. I know I'm getting inquiries, I know you're getting inquiries as well, from airlines, folks, even more so now, in regards to, you know, again, being a hub, a cargo hub here on Guam. Likewise, I think it was, if I'm not mistaken, Air of Vietnam, Vietnam Air, whatever, at this point, wanting to open a hangar, and working, of course, closely with the Guam Community College to, again, train folks there, to have a U.S.-certified facility, to get their planes certified out here, and their mechanics, and things of that nature, which will make foreign airlines, give them easier access to U.S. ports, because of the, again, of they're in U.S. territory, and mechanics, and whatever else that needs to be done is on U.S. territory and U.S.-certified. So that being said, I would love a longer term, of course, you know, but knowing, again, I'm a person of compromise at this point, I'm glad we're able to accommodate the airport's needs in regards to the three-year extension. And again, as a result of the tour, and having this body to understand a little more about the airport operation, that is not a one-size-fits-all situation, that there's more understanding, and Bill 223 was born out of that. So thank you very much. And I know we're going to arrange for a couple more tours with you guys, but thank you very much for that, because, again, folks who don't consider, I mean, you guys have more property than I even thought from the very beginning, you know? And like you said, the concession is one thing, the buildup of the perimeter areas for airline use, and specifically airline-related stuff, is a different scenario at this point. And inquiries are, again, coming to my office as well as yours. So, but I'm in full support, and thank you again to Senator Titegwe for introducing this bill. And it was actually immediately after the tour, this happened, and as well as Senator Sabina had come on board with this. But thank you very much for that, for that understanding. And again, as a person of compromise, fives, you know, another five is a little better than just five. But as we move forward, you know, in our operations and all that, and enhancement, and keep up the good work that you guys are doing, and very responsive to, again, the inquiries that, at least from what my perspective, and the airport needs and things like that, you've been very responsive. So hats off to the management and board. You guys have, again, I'm a little biased, but I like you guys a lot. But anyway, thank you very much for that, and I look forward to, again, listening to the debate on Senator Roy's bill as well. But thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Lujan. Senator Hernandez, on Bill 223? All right. All right.
Just as a comment, just wanted to update Senator.
Pardon?
I just wanted to give the update on the Senator's comment, when we just had the last site visit with all the senators, that because of Senator Sabina Perez, we were able to answer a lot of her questions, and then take her to exactly where we're, what we were citing, that she was comfortable in supporting Senator Titegwe's bill. The other thing is.
Are you representing her position on the bill, Senator? Are you representing the Senator's position on the bill?
No, 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 I'm just trying to say, just give a comment on that. But also, just an update on TSA. TSA just had their top person from compliance come to Guam, and we express exactly what we're trying to do with the preclearance for Honolulu passengers, and she's definitely in support of that. And she's got to look, what she's got to do is look at the different laws that may interact with each other. So that's just an update, sir.
Thank you. I had an opportunity to meet with her as well, as well as Mr. Guerrero, regarding that, and they're in support of that. And likewise, this is what happens when you work cohesively and speak as one voice, and it's just now, I mean, you know, we need now just to dot our i's and cross our t's, but that's what happens when we collaborate and we're on the same page. But thank you very much for that. Appreciate for that update.
And then we have the hearing. I guess Congressman Moilen has a Zoom meeting for one of the bills that they're introducing.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Senators. Yeah, as for my questions, I just, so this law that's in place right now, the five-year short-term leases, or a declaration of need for longer-term leases, this has been in place, it looks like, since 2013, sponsored at the time by Senator Respecho, and amended in 2018? I think by Senator Ada, sorry. But let me just see. But at the time, so there is a process in place for the determination of need to go for periods longer. And I think the airport has also been granted special authority to lease for, as you said, for the 10 years for concessions. Is that correct?
That was, just to clarify, Speaker, if I may, answer that question. The Guam Legislature later authorized for an up to three-year extension for existing concessions.
No, that was recently.
That was the recent.
Right. But the baseline concession leases, how long were they? You said 10 years.
Yes.
Yeah. How is that?
Yeah, those were, so they were, they have been on, especially the rent-a-car and the parking facilities.
No, what is the authority for the 10 years?
Those were done prior to the change in the law in 2013. And so they were on short-term extensions on a month-to-month basis.
So those were even prior to the 2013 law?
Yes.
All right. And does the airport currently have any law authorizing an extended term of any of its leases?
Not outside of the three-year extension that's provided.
All right. And does the airport have any problem with using the determination of need process for extended-term leases?
No, actually, we've, I think, prior to us coming on, the Board of Directors for the airport did designate several parcels of land through that determination of need process.
All right. Yeah, that makes sense to me, that you know which land may be, as you said, good for aeronautical use, and maybe not good for non-aeronautical use, and that you can determine that in advance, and maybe set some of those up for extended terms, right?
Yeah, and I'll add to, you're correct, Speaker. And I'll let you know, too, that during our master planning process, there are requirements for us to update our airport layout plan. I'll just refer to it as our ALP. We can do that outside of a master planning process, but especially now, we've gone through it, especially us personally have gone through the master planning process. The ALP is a very detailed document, as part of the master plan document, that designates all of airport property, and what is designated for what purpose, or what purposes. And so that is something that is FAA-approved. It has to be FAA-approved. Any amendments to that requires FAA approval. And so any of the plans that we have have to abide by that airport layout plan as approved by the FAA. And so I just wanted to also say that that's somewhat of even a federal requirement to designate certain parcels as aeronautical, as noise buffer zones, as runway protection zones, and so forth, and for commercial development, whether aeronautical or non-aeronautical. So just wanted to add that to the discussion of determination of need, is that we go through the airport layout plan, and we have to kind of abide by that as a FAA regulation, we follow that determination.
All right. So you've outlined your property, kind of divided into which ones are for aeronautical needs, and you're saying like waste and things like that are aeronautical needs? And, all right. And so what will you do to get extended terms on those leases?
Well, currently, we don't have any commercial leases at the moment that are interested in extensions. I'm trying to think as I speak. One has recently expired, and so that's something that we're looking at for this bill, especially if we do get 10 years, to look at investment in a property that, where a land lease has expired. For all the other commercial leases that we have, they're still on their current or extended terms that were commenced prior to the law being changed in 2013. The only exceptions are all the five-year leases that we continue to do in our terminal building for office space rent and so forth.
All right. I'm just curious, is Customs designated a aeronautical or a non-aeronautical use, and that's according to your plans?
Yeah, our understanding is Customs is, Customs and Quarantine, you're talking about, is considered non-aeronautical. Aeronautical has a very specific definition in FAA regulations.
And what about the U.S. immigration?
Immigration, they are, yeah, they pay rent based off of the non-signatory airline rent, actually.
Non-aeronautical?
Yeah, in some cases, I think they pay a premium.
That's both Customs and TSA.
Yeah.
Right.
TSA.
U.S. Customs and Border Patrol, and the TSA.
And TSA.
Both are declared non-aeronautical use.
That's correct. And they also pay premium for their leases.
Yeah, let me clarify, Speaker. So TSA pays premium, or they pay the non-aeronautical rate for the terminal building rent. CBP, there is a separate immigration fee that we collect to cover the space that they occupy.
Okay. So have you designated which properties in particular you want to subject to a long-term lease, longer than five years?
Well, at this time, based on what we have, there's most of the, most of the properties that are somewhat connected to the airfield are what we're determining aeronautical properties that will be leased. We do have properties that are outside of the airfield, and that would be potential non-aeronautical uses for a property lease.
All right. Are any of these properties currently under lease, the ones on the perimeter, I guess, of the airstrip?
Yeah, we do.
You have current leases?
Yeah, we have leases with transportation companies. You see CTSI. There's one with Triple B Forwarders. There's one with Pac-Air Properties. DHL operates out of a building that we purchased, or that we constructed, and they're paying commercial rent on that property.
Is any of that building unoccupied, unleased? You've been able to lease it all, right?
Not in that area, but up near Papa's, or where Capital Kitchen, we have the Napa building that was there, that's not occupied at its time.
Why not?
The lease has ended, and so we're trying to find folks, or people, potential leasers. But this five-year issue, because they have to bring that building up to compliance. When that building was first built, we didn't have the zoning laws that we had back then. And now that the zoning laws have, has been updated, like, for example, your fire suppression system. system, whoever leases that building has to make sure that it comes up to code, for them to lease that property.
All right. But the building exists, and it's just a matter of them bringing it up to code, building code.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, and I'll also add, too, Speaker, if I may. You know, the Napa building obviously requires some significant investment.
Say that again. I'm sorry. Can you just make the volume louder to the audio, please? Thank you.
Sorry, let me speak a little bit closer. Yeah, the Napa building, the Napa building obviously will require a lot of significant investment. And so, you know, a 10-year lease might be sufficient for some private company to be willing to come in to make that significant investment. It definitely will provide better opportunities for us to find someone to do that. We do have a lot of property within the air operations area, the AOA area, that's kind of connected to the taxiways and the airfield. We call it the South Ramp. That's where United's hangar is located. That's where ACI's hangar is located. There is a lot of vacant property there that isn't leased, that could be leased for aeronautical purposes. And in those specific cases, a 10-year lease obviously is, may not be sufficient for a large corporation to come in to lease that space. We also have plans, and FAA is funding a cargo apron that's going to be adjacent to, and the designs are still being done, but they're going to be adjacent to our existing cargo facility. The problem with the cargo facility is that they have to park the plane a little bit further away from the cargo facility, and then they'd have to truck things over to the cargo facility. And so our plans are to have a cargo apron, which is just a concrete slab for airplanes to park and then be able to be adjacent to the cargo facility, but also with, also with plans to have potentially another cargo-type facility adjacent on the other side of the apron. The airport doesn't have the capital to be able to construct that cargo facility, and so a public-private partnership or a long-term lease may be feasible, but constructing that large of a facility may take tens of millions of dollars, maybe even $100 million to construct. And so a longer-term lease would be relevant for that. They won't build that cargo facility anywhere else on the island. They will only build it on the airport. And so that's why there's some uniqueness to the airport and those aeronautical activity land that would be available for those activities that is a little bit, you know, specific to the airport. So I just wanted to note that. Those are really important parcels for us, and we're not talking just about generating and diversifying airports' revenues with land leases. We're talking about potential for creating industries. And he mentioned an MRO facility. We don't want to downplay what that means. An MRO facility is big time. It's, we're talking about repair, maintenance, and overhaul of aircraft that we don't currently have for large aircraft, and that requires workforce development, that will require bringing in experts. And so that's actually potentially another industry that we can create on airport property if we're able to attract. But I will note that the process of determining, if I may, Madam Speaker, the process of determining and verifying interest in aeronautical activities does require due diligence from the airport. We don't just take in an offer and say, "Let's do it." We look at our airport layout plan. We look at and request for financial feasibility, because we don't want to commit to a private company without doing our due diligence, because they may just sit on the land. And so we want to make sure that they have the financial capacity to be able to complete what they're saying they'll complete. We want to know if that financing is something that is viable. And we also want to make sure that there's compatibility and it doesn't take away from other types of things that the airport is planning in the future. So we don't, we don't just say, "If you want it here in this parcel, go ahead, have it." We don't, we make sure that we conduct our due diligence on that.
Right. All right. So, yes, so that makes total sense, and it's, I think that is how you should be going. So I guess I want to just find out again. Under the current determination of need process, you would put out a notice that says, "We see a need," and you're supposed to do an analysis, of course, "to lease this property," and you designate the exact property for a longer-term period, and then the term, of course, that you want. And then you get to solicit, so that there's competition. So you determine which property will go for a long term, and then you solicit competition, as opposed to one company coming in saying, "I want to build a hangar. Can you give me a property?" You could do the opposite. Is that correct? You could go out right now and say, this, you know, go through that determination of need process, show that there, we're going to build, we want to allow this property to be available for hangars for 30 years or something like that. And I've seen the legislature be very reasonable for long-term contracts when the purpose is very clear. And, you know, of course, the way you describe it, that purpose is clear for those particular properties. But I don't think it's always been that way in the past, and I think that's why this law was put into place. It's just for another set of eyes to review the process. In fact, when the law was passed, the sponsor said, "The law was being, if the law at that time was being followed, then this proposal may not have been introduced." Senator Rispio stated that he feels the proposal does not hamper investing because it levels the playing field and informs investors of exactly what the terms are. And so that's, I guess, what the intent of the law was, to inform them in advance that this property will be for this many years, right? And you've got the perfect properties to do that, and not, but not all of them, right? So that we don't need to change maybe the law in a blanket and allow all terms to be up to 30 years, because I don't think the government's going to get good deals necessarily that way. BBMR, in their analysis of the bill, said that increasing the term by another five years provides an opportunity for GovGuam to collect an extended incremental rental value for rental of public real property. It may also increase the overall interest for investors. However, extending the term length means that the base appraised values of the property cannot be evaluated until it has expired. And I think he's alluding to, you know, why the bill was put into the first place. It's just those changing circumstances, right? That if we are able further down the road to get more money for that piece of property, then we should try to do that, right? And just, you know, we know some of the issues. This was not, and then there was other testimony when the law was amended, talking about, this was by Senator Pangolinan, "By putting the determination of need upfront based on the project requirements will ensure that everyone knows they're going to have a 50-year lease, for example." And so it was just kind of a level the playing field by announcing that in advance which properties are subject to a longer-term lease and which ones are not. And I know you've seen the legislature do this for different properties. For example, the submerged cables, we allow longer-term leases for that particular use of those particular properties. When you said that the FAA requires non-aeronautical activity leases to be fair market value, is that a minimum or a maximum?
That's at minimum.
Minimum. So minimum fair market value. I think that's reasonable for us as well, right? We would want to see nothing less than that, but it doesn't prevent you from negotiating up, all right? I think that seems reasonable to me. So do you have any plans of using the determination of need process for, for example, hangar use of some of your existing properties?
Well, I think, I think since the law had been in place, we've had interests, but explaining the process of determination of need, the need to, for contracts longer than five years, in discussing with these private entities, we haven't had interest, even with that explanation of the determination of need process, the exceptional term contract process. There might be some reluctance to come before the legislature after having fully negotiated a contract with the airport and the Board of Directors and having to bear potentially proprietary information during that process of the exceptional term contract. And I'm speaking, you know, just thinking of what some of these private companies may or may not want to do. We talk about Air Vietnam, for example. The executive manager brought them up. You know, they're a foreign country, a foreign company, and I think in terms of a $280 million investment, we were stunned, but obviously, we wanted to get a little bit more information about what that was about. And so I think in terms of explaining what an exceptional term contract process would require, you know, the funding that they would have to put in for feasibility studies for negotiation purposes, and then not knowing that that is something that is guaranteed, even after they deal with the Board of Directors of the Autonomous Agency, and then going through another process after that with some uncertainty. We haven't had any luck with, since the law was changed, with any long-term leases. So we've been just continuing to do five-year leases and have kind of foregone on some of these potential longer-term projects, especially aeronautical projects.
Yes. So I know, and I know that airport representatives have come in and testified that that's the reason, but I haven't seen that in writing anywhere. I'm just going to tell you that. And that's why I'm asking you, if you did it in advance, if you declared that this property is subject to a long-term lease and that you would set up some of the parameters that are required by the current law, then, then you could put it out for competition, right? And, and half of that process is done already in advance, as opposed to you explaining to them, "Oh, we're going to have to go through this long process." I really don't think it's, the thing that comes to legislature is the final deal. So I don't know how, if that's done by the procurement law, any of it that's proprietary or not proprietary is going to be any differently exposed here than it was during your procurement process, right? So I don't find that to be very convincing, with all due respect, that coming to the legislature exposes them unnecessarily. I don't think so. We're looking, and if you came into the legislature, or if you just determined in advance that these properties are going to be designated for long-term leases, we're looking at hangars, so we expect to get this much money from them, right? Or whatever, whatever process you're going to go through, you also have to make those determinations, right? What do you think the value might be? And that's a minimum or something you can set prior to negotiations, right? But I don't know. I guess I'm still not seeing the real detriment to that process, and especially if you have these master plans, you're able to set, analyze your properties in advance and set these up. But, all right, we'll go to maybe the next bill, and we'll discuss it a little further, please, Deputy Director.
If I may comment, just to that, the position, or at least the principle of the solicitation process is to solicit for competition, but that's with the assumption that, that there are people banging down our door wanting to lease at the airport. Sometimes it's few and far between to get a nine-digit potential investment in airport property for an aeronautical activity, and any impediment may just be a detriment to their interest, and they might want to consider going elsewhere. And I'm not saying that there's an example of that, because we don't have anything in writing, as you had mentioned, because this is just our experience in our verbal discussions with certain companies. But we operate from the perspective that there's just not, you know, hundreds of private companies that are very interested in coming down into the airport and putting in aeronautical activities. It's really coming from the perspective of, we're trying to entice interest so that we can create these revenue-generating opportunities. So that's kind of the assumption that we come at. So putting out a solicitation when someone is already interested may yield that that one interested person might, you know, it might lead to the same result, but it's also another step that, that would have to be taken.
Please explain how you would do that, then? If there, are you saying you would not put it out for competition?
I'll just say that Assurance Number 38 for the FAA regulations for hangar development requires that we have to provide space for hangar developments for aeronautical--
No, I'm saying, you've got one company coming to you. Are you allowed to give it to them without soliciting from other companies?
At this point, the law requires the determination of need process for leases longer than--
All right, let's say the, even, that's for over five years. Let's say we granted you the authority to extend it, right? Are you saying that in your procurement process, you are allowed to negotiate with only one company for a lease of airport land without soliciting from competitors?
No, at this point, we would go through our FAA process and our internal processes, which would require that we do our due diligence with that company if they were interested.
So you're not, you guys are not subject to the procurement law for these properties, you're saying?
Well, the law requires that we go through that for--
Well, FAA, sure, you can, you have to meet FAA. But what about the competitive solicitation laws that we have? Are you exempt from those?
I don't know if we're, I don't think we're exempt from procurement law. We obviously--
So when there's a non-solicited offer, right? There's very strict requirements of how to deal with those, and it always ends up that you have to solicit competition. So I'm just asking, what in your process exempts you from that?
Yeah, there's no exemption from procurement law. Title V, Chapter V, there's no exemption for the airport for that. As it relates to revenue-generating contracts, that's why we're going through rules and regulations for concessions and how to solicit those, because that's a separate discussion on how that's a different process and, you know, lowest bid versus highest bid and so forth. But as it relates to, you know, longer-term leases, we would have to follow the law.
All right. So the reason I'm asking, because it looks to me like if you follow the determination of need, it mandates that you put out a solicitation after you've determined that this is going to be for a longer term, and these are your minimum requirements, you solicit competition. I think the procurement law does the same thing for unsolicited offers in the end. You can look at it, but in the end, you're going to have to put out a solicitation for competition for that type of activity, right?
We would certainly follow the law.
All right. So I'm, I don't see it necessarily to be a disadvantage to do this determination of need process. That's what I'm saying. It, in fact, will give you an extended term you determine, and you are in charge of, you know, determining the length, the parameters, and the use as a cargo facility or other facility. All right. I'm going to ask the sponsor to please close.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to close, and also thank those who testified. You know, earlier, we talked about, we had actually had legislation regarding the Marianas Yacht Club, you know, wanting to actually extend it for almost 30 or even 50 years, I think, if I'm not mistaken. We went ahead and amended that, as it came out of the committee, to a 10-year lease. So we are seeing progress. I don't want to, you know, let it look like we're not doing what we can. We, we want to remember our mistakes in the past, and I feel that taking baby steps, you know, might, might help at this. But one of my biggest concerns, too, that we need to look at and address is, is the law itself. And if I'm not mistaken, you know, well, I'll talk about the law currently, but I wanted to also talk about what Senator Roy Rispio, it was mentioned, he made comment about why he introduced legislation. And I just wanted to read a statement from him on this bill. I want to, Senator Roy Rispio quote, "I want to express our appreciation to the all proponents of this proposed legislation for the insightful understanding of how a five-year cap can have a chilling effect on economic opportunities while advocating for the public good, demonstrating their dedication to finding balanced solutions for the benefit of our island community." You know, Senator, former Senator Kanata, you've been on this side of the table here, and you know that we, we want to be very protective. It's the people's money. They put the trust in us. But once you get on the other side, you become a director, you realize the hurdles that you go through and how to, you know, what, blood out of a turnip, you know, and trying to make ends meet and keep, keep the airport afloat, keep the port of Florida afloat, keep Gita afloat-- and all these other entities. Even Senator Ada had told me that he wanted me to push for this legislation, and he was the one that introduced the bill. And he was sitting in your position. So it is quite different, you know, sitting on this side and the importance of it. But it's also important, you know, Senator, that we maintain, you know, the confidence in the people, as well as a balance and transparency and accountability is at the forefront. We do not want to make the mistakes of the past. So baby steps. One of the, so I just wanted to reiterate, you know, what Senator Roy Rispicio said, and I think audio, if you can turn down my mic, that's what we're getting a feedback. Okay, testing one mic. Okay, sorry, it's the musician in me. Okay, so in the other bill that I introduced in the 36 Guam Legislature, I made a comment. Critical to moving any commercial contract lease permit or license forward involving such a public real property is action by the legislature, okay? We all know that, especially on the current law right now. With respect to a lease term beyond the current five-year limit, Guam law requires the legislature to approve, disapprove, an exceptional term within 60 days from the date of filing such request with the Speaker's office. However, the current law does not mandate the legislature conduct, to conduct a public hearing or complete committee report, or, and complete committee requirements within a certain timeframe, which means the legislature has the option of sitting on a proposal or ignoring it entirely, it entirely. That's the current law. Investors are looking for confidence in the, in this body to move forward if they're investing over 100,000 or, you know, even as small as 100,000. That's sometimes the life savings, or people putting up their home to open a business, or 100 million dollars. Either or, the confidence is needed of this body, that if you're going to make an investment, that this, this legislature will move forward. And the current law, you can sit on it and not make any movement. And we both know that once you start the process in business, on any kind of lease, there's research that costs money. There's engineers, architects that cost money. There's people who need to go in and do a financial advisor to hire, whether it's feasible. There are costs incurred before even coming to you for a lease agreement. So the missed opportunities, we can lessen that. We can lessen that to those who are willing to do it for 10 years. Again, I, I'm weary about going to 30, because I, I feel that, you know, if someone's going to make an investment of 200,000, 200 million dollars or 100 million dollars, they can come to this body and get that 30-year lease for now. Okay, so I thank you again, and please remember to keep it safe at the airport for everyone, and, and be safe. I know COVID is happening, happening right now, there's a spread. So I hope that everyone at the airport is being very safe, okay? The doorway to Guam is there, so please keep everybody safe. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sisus Masi, Senator Taitikui. There being no additional individuals to present testimony, the committee will consider Bill 223-37COR duly heard by the committee. It is now 10:32, and we'll move on to the second agenda item, Bill Number 103-37LS, sponsored by Senator Roy Kanata. Senator Kanata, you may introduce the bill.
Good morning, Sisus Masi. Hello, mic check. Good day, Sisus Masi, and thank you to those joining us today in this hearing. Bill 103-37 is an important piece of legislation that creates a more conducive environment for investment activity in Guam. The bill extends the number of years where a business can lease the government land for five to 30 years, and it requires the MAGA HOG or the relevant board of directors of the government want to take action within 90, 90 calendar days from the date of filing with the speaker to approve and disapprove the commercial contract, lease, permit, or license. The incentive of the Bill 103, 103-LS is an issue that was brought up in the roundtable hearing last year with key businesses and the government representatives. Concerns shared regarding challenges faced with local businesses when engaging in long-term projects or investments due to limited duration of government leases available, available at, at present. Bill 103-37LS will help attract more businesses to Guam, create jobs, and stimulate the economic growth. It will also help local businesses establish themselves and provide stability for their operations in the long run. I look forward to the discussion today. Thank you, everyone, for their input.
Sisus Masi, Senator Kanata. All right, we'll hear testimony on this bill now from the airport.
Thank you, Speaker Talai. I'm John Kanata, the executive manager for the Guam International Airport Authority. Good day, Speaker Talai and members of the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture. Thank you for the opportunity to submit testimony on Bill 103-37, enacting Section 5127 of Subarticle C, Article 2, Chapter 5, Division 1, Title V of the Guam Code annotated, relative to commercial leasing of real property and related facilities. The AAB Wampat International Airport Authority, Guam, expresses full support for Bill 103-37, and thanks to the committee for allowing this important topic and dialogue to occur. Bill 103-37 aims to increase the authorized term for the contract lease permit or license for use of public real property and related facilities by any non-governmental person or entity from five years to 30 years, while foregoing the exceptional term contract process, with the caveat that the terms and conditions of the contract, lease, permit, or license have been satisfied during the initial five years, as evidenced by written approval by the board of directors of the relevant agency. The GIA believes that up to 30 years is sufficient time for tenants, developers, and investors to recoup their investment into a property, and that it is reasonable to require that within the first five years of any contract for the use of public real property and related facilities, such as a length of 30 years, that the terms and conditions are met by the lesssee to continue the remainder of such contract. The original language in the statute that Bill 103-37 aims to amend limits the authority to contract and lease public real property and related facilities to five years unless an exceptional term contract process is followed. Speaking for the GIA, this limitation has discouraged many interested tenants, developers, and investors from entering into airport development projects. Good examples are hangars, fixed base operations, consolidated car rental service areas, in-flight catering, catering facilities, cargo and warehousing. And based on our experiences, the change of the law had been made, enacted, such enactment of such limitations, GIA has not a single long-term lease of any facility or property beyond five years. Speaking specifically on how this legislation will apply to GIA, we thought it important to reiterate that the GIA is mandated by both local and federal statutes to operate under the common principle that airports operate as financially self-sustaining enterprises, and is required to generate its own revenue through operating fees paid by signatory airlines, tenants, passengers, and users of the airport facilities and services to pay for the cost for operating and maintaining the airport. Therefore, any possibility to improve the GIA's ability to generate additional aeronautical and non-aeronautical revenues is paramount to the continued recovery and success of the GIA. Bill 103-37 provides such opportunity, or authority, for the GIA to achieve a much more financially sustainable and resilient future for Guam's only commercial airport by providing the ability and pathway to further diversify and secure its revenue streams to help withstand regional, national, and international shocks to the aviation industry. The Guam Legislature has previously authorized similar lengths of property leases in Public Law 35-114, which authorized the University of Guam to contract and lease property for up to 30 years. This authority will provide potential tenants, investors, or developers the ability to obtain the necessary commercial financing and a term to fully amortize their initial investment and achieve a return on investment for their planned capital improvements. As another comparison, seen in my Public Law 20-84, increase the terms of public land leases for up to 40 years, plus an extension of 15 years, for a total of 55 years. Bill 103-37 proposes to authorize similar leases of public real property and related facilities, but a period of just up to 30 years. Even with the passage and enactment of Bill 103-37 and the authority it provides, GIA must continue to adhere to federal requirements and regulations relative to leasing the, leasing of airport properties and facilities. GIA operates in a highly regulated environment, including the process of contracting and leasing airport facilities and properties. As a recipient of federal aviation financial assistance programs, GIA is a federally obligated airport and must agree to certain federal obligations and assurances. These federal assurances are collected from federal legislation, advisory circulars, executive orders, and federal aviation regulations, and the GIA must comply with such assurances as it relates to the development, leasing, and operations of airport lands and buildings. Such assurances include the preservation of rights and powers, and that no lease or agreement restricts GIA from providing the services of a public-use airport, and that no land be transferred or disposed without FAA approval. First and foremost, aeronautical activities are determined to be a priority for the use of airport facilities and properties. And if the property is deemed not needed at such time for aeronautical use, then non-aeronautical activities are authorized, but are required to, to be rented at fair market value. Non-aeronautical use of properties not at fair market value is considered a subsidy by the airport and is deemed as airport revenue diversion, which does not adhere to federal regulation. Furthermore, the GIA must also ensure land and compatibility with, ensure land compatibility with the FAA-approved airport layout plan and that development adheres to such ALP. Additionally, most of GIA land available for lease or development was acquired through the quick claim deed from the federal government to GIA as part of the base relocation closure of Naval Air Station Agania. All property is required to be used for airport purposes, which means uses that are directly related to aeronautical operations, such as noise buffer, noise buffer land, or generate revenue that contributes to the financial self-sufficiency of the airport. Most important land, most important land is also prioritized for terminal and runway expansion, taxiways, runway protection zones, and aeronautical activities. Madam Chair and honorable senators, now is a critical time in the history of Guam's only commercial airport to begin the process of improving our ability to diversify revenue streams that will provide us the ability to continue to improve passenger service, passenger experience, and to open the doors to investment in facilities on airport property that have the potential to create new industries and generate additional economic activity on Guam. As we all know, Guam tourist industry continues its recovery of travel from our source markets, having steadily improved since the COVID-19 pandemic. Now is the time to act so that we can spend the next couple of years utilizing the authority contemplated in Bill 103-37 to set the foundation for which the information benefits can come to fruition. As we continue on this runway to recovery, we must ensure that we do not lose momentum and that we also prepare for the future economic potential for Guam. Bill 103-37 provides a pathway to achieve that economic potential for the GIA and for Guam. Bill 103-37 also amends certain portions of the exceptional term contracts process by requiring the Guam Legislature to take action within 90 days instead of 60 days upon transmittal of an exceptional term contract to the Speaker of the Guam Legislature, during which time of public hearing shall be conducted, and approval, disapproval may take place. The GIA believes that this is reasonable, but also recommends that the tolling of the 90-day period be amended to start such transmittal by exceptional term contract is made to the Speaker of the Guam Legislature by default approval. Once again, on behalf of GIA, we thank you for this opportunity to testify in Bill 103-37. We look forward to working with this committee to advance policies in support of the continued economic and air development. Thank you again, Madam Chair, for providing this testimony.
Sisus Masi, Director Kanata, former senator, for your testimony on behalf of the airport. And I'll ask the sponsor if he has any comments or questions.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have no questions or concerns. I think we've pretty much vetted the bill. I think we, along with my colleague Senator Talatiri, we have the same sentiments. I think we're just, we're going to go back again and repeat the same thing. Sorry about that. So I think in the interest of time, I have no further questions or concerns to advance to the body. Thank you.
Sisus Masi, Senator Kanata, Senator Luhan.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker. Thank you again for the management, GIA's management testimony this morning. And likewise, Madam Chair, you know, the question you asked in a previous bill, which is relevant to this bill as well, is we're working closely with the airport management in regards to identifying, of course, areas at the airport, which they already identified in regards to aeronautical businesses that must happen. Likewise, areas that are not necessarily aeronautical-related, but rely on either seaport or airport-related business to expedite, again, products, like, again, to be able to, to, to enhance the viability of companies like an Amazon to, to come to Guam, which they would be, I'm sure, be very interested in, to compete against Alibaba, to be able to get their products out at a fast rate, get them in and out at a faster rate. A lot of their products are, of course, manufactured in, in, in China. And so to be competitive, this is what, again, the airport, and we've been working on to identify these, these areas that are not necessarily only aeronautical-related or strictly aeronautical-related, but aeronautical businesses, or businesses that need, again, airport and seaport facilities to be able to get products out. So they're, again, it's very vital. So in working with that, and thank you for the recommendation, because that is exactly what we're trying to put together is what areas, because again, there, even with the, the areas outside of the concessions inside the airport, you may have facilities that go to 20 years, 30, even 50, depending on the, on the, the strength of that, that entity that's wanting to, to, to come in. And if we have a company like an Amazon come in here, we have more leverage to be able to, to get a higher dollar amount, again, knowing that their competitors right across the street, across the ocean with Alibaba. But thank you for that recommendation, Madam, Madam Speaker, Madam Chair, for the airport, and that's exactly what we're trying to do in identifying those properties that will be strictly aeronautical and aeronautical-related companies that have to, that rely on these ports of entry access. Thank you very much, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Luhan. Senator Barnett, any questions or comments? Senator Taitikui?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you again for coming and testifying and sticking to your gun. I too, you know, like the author of the legislation. I think we, we discussed this a lot in the last bill. So a lot of questions were asked, and we were just repeating. So again, thank you so much. Be safe out there. Thank you.
Sisus Masi, Senator Taitikui. All right, again, I have some more questions. I'm just going to go over it one more time. So there's two options available to you. For example, for some of the companies you listed that came to you unsolicited, so those in our procurement law are called unsolicited offers. This happens
This happens to the Chamor Land Trust a lot. People come to them saying, "We want that land. We want to use it for this purpose. Make us a deal." Right? But our procurement law requires unsolicited offers also end up being competitive, right? That we have to announce that and put it out for competition to try to get best value for the government of Guam. And your testimony is that you're not trying to circumvent that competitiveness, right? And that the way I see this determination of need existing process for extended-term leases is very similar. It's like you put it out, you've determined that we need a long-term lease at the airport for hangars, for example, in general, and you solicit any company that wants to come in and make a deal with you for this term for hangars, or whatever specific purposes or general description you want to create, and that's how we are going to also get competition. There's also nothing to prevent special deals where you come in, and some agencies have done this, and say, "We want to lease with this particular person for this particular use, notwithstanding any other law," and we do it that way. And it requires, of course, legislative review. It seems to me that if you have to do competitive, what we're just trying to avoid by these laws is just the legislative review part, right? And so I get it, there's been, you know, speculation out there that we confirmed the board, we have confirmed you, director, and that you people are very, 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 very competent. I have no dispute with that. My issue is that I'm also a fan of history of Guam, right? And we have seen, and that's really, that's really, for me, the bottom line. It's, we have given this discretion before, and the people of Guam got burned, they got a bad deal. And so in order to protect them from getting a bad deal, no matter who is in power anywhere, these laws were put into place. In fact, in the committee findings on the law that was put into place, it says, "This is being done because of the current, like, litigation that we entered into for YTK at the port." I think that thing went on for a decade. I think the airport is currently under a decades-long litigation as well, and the allegations in both cases are procurement law, right? Did they follow it? Did they not? Was it a good deal for the people? I mean, there's different allegations. I can't attest to all of them, but I'm just saying, even with our best eyes on these things, you know, I don't think it hurts to follow the original intent, excuse me, and just make sure, right? That, and I know this is a little uncomfortable, because I don't really mean it personally for any of you, or none of the existing board members on either of these entities, or anywhere in the government, but I just think, I just think this came because of, because of what the past legislatures found to be, they said, abuse or not-good value perhaps, and I think it's just all in good-faith efforts by the legislature to make sure that we get good value. So my question is, is there any way, if this law is passed, that you're going to be able to negotiate with any of those companies that you listed, Senator Canata, Director Canata, any of those companies that you listed that we missed their business because they didn't want to subject themselves to the process to get an extended lease? Or did they just not want to compete with anyone? Because that's also in place too, right? They're coming to you, they want to deal with you, yet you also have to tell them, "Well, you're going to have to compete with everybody eventually. That's the only way we can make a deal." Right? Is that correct, or am I missing something where you are authorized to negotiate with those companies without being competitive?
Just, Senator, just from my experience with all these companies, and we do meet them not only on Guam, but we do meet them at our airport conferences and stuff. And so what we do is we give them, hey, we have the property available, but these are the things that we have to go through. These are the requirements by law that we have to go through. And so we do give them a copy of the existing law, and of course, their thing is, we'll get back to you, we're going to go through legal, and we'll get back to you and stuff. So, and then in follow-up meetings after that, you know, just, I don't know if they'll put it in writing or not, but they've mentioned, and they've, through conversation, it goes, "Let us know when your law has been amended, and then we'll look, we'll come back. We have interest in coming back to do our assessment again." We had, Air Vietnam, they were ready to fly to Guam, they were just about to get their visas approved and stuff, and when we sent them the, we sent them the law, you know, right after that, they said, "Oh, we'll wait until that law has been amended." So, so nothing in writing, but through verbal...
All right. Did you send them the procurement law as well, that showed that you're going to have to solicit regardless of their proposal?
Our property management office gives them all the requirements that we need, as if we were going to consummate a lease.
Yeah, so I'm just suggesting that it's also likely that it's the procurement law in general that they don't want to comply with, that they want to make us deal, and they don't need to be competitive. Have you, since you've received any of those, or, you know, had any of those discussions, designated any property for long-term lease pursuant to the existing statute?
No, we have not designated any property. However, the property footprint that they can see, that they would like to, because what they got to do is get, they got to get their, what their requirements are, and then we go, "Okay, based on your requirements, this is the properties that we have available."
All right. But what about my suggestion that, since you've already done a master plan, and can you just designate some properties for hangars, for example? If you think hangars is a big industry that we need, or maintenance, MROs? Can we just designate, these are the properties for MROs, and then solicit?
Yes, ma'am.
Right now, under a long-term lease? I mean, you know, just go through the process. And it's only that, in the end, after you have negotiated, under our procurement law, and you've got a contract, you're going to come here, and I, again, it's very rare that I have seen a legislature disagree with any proposal that's been screened by the airport and the FAA, especially in this case, it's going to have to be approved by the FAA. So, I don't know. I feel like that's, it's not that part of the process that would discourage them, or you.
Yes, ma'am. We'll take that and see how we can go through that process.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate it. For me, I just want to make sure for all companies that they have a competitive playing field, a level playing field, that everybody knows in advance that these are the properties that we need long-term leases on, and I think the legislature would be very reasonable in response to that, as opposed to saying, "All leases can be for 30 years," right? At your discretion? And I just think that's where we just, we just have to remember history and just maybe be a little bit more discerning on that. You've been successful in many things at the airport, and so I expect continued success. I expect you're going to be able to move forward, as you suggest, in leasing properties for bigger industries for Guam, and I appreciate that very much, that those are your efforts. I support those all the way. I, is your current master, are there current food and beverage? I didn't really get a clear answer at the last hearing, but are your current food and beverage concessions a subcontract of the master concession? Are they independent?
Independent.
Okay. All right. So what's included in the master concession contract that's been under litigation for so long? That is just the low tea versus DFS retail area?
Yeah, that's the specialty retail contract. It's for, specifically for specialty retail, sort of high-end goods.
All right. Thank you. All right. Well, I want to thank you for your testimony and the discussion with me this morning and with my colleagues. Senator, would you like to close on the bill? Senator Canata?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, we are just trying to take a proactive approach in promoting economic growth and diversification for the island. Bill 103-37 L.S. is in continuation of, for those efforts, and it seeks to utilize the public-held lands or properties to maximize the potential. By extending lease contracts, we can attract larger-scale investments that require long-term commitments, similar to GTA, they're one of our biggest land leases. This will not only benefit the investors, but also generate more revenue for the government of Guam and the people of Guam. I thank those in attendance for their input today, and most especially the airport. I'm also, I've also reached out to Guida and other possible investees for this potential legislation. Again, thank you for your presence today, and thank you to the Speaker and the committee for having this hearing. Thank you again.
Situs Massey, Senator Canata. Again, to all those who submitted written or verbal testimony, we will continue to accept testimony until the close of business today, and we will hereby declare that both bills, 103-37 L.S. and 223-37, have been heard. Situs Massey, and this hearing is now adjourned.